Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'll call regular meeting of the Buckanan City Councilor. Ask you to join me in for a moment of silent meditation and prayer. Thank you. Well, respect the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose stance stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have Wesley and students. It's our tradition, custom, that we ask you all to stand up, face the camera, tell us your name, where you're from, what you major in, please. Start in front row.
Hi, I'm Brandon. I'm from Nashville, North Carolina, and I'm a county major.
Hi, I'm Jenna. I'm from Pittsburgh, and I'm a sports business major.
Hi, I'm Emily. I'm from Alexi, Maryland, and I'm a business management major.
My name is Brandon Franklin. I am from Salem, West Virginia, and my major is business.
I'm Ben Strater. I'm from Bernsall, West Virginia, and my major is accounting.
Zach Oliver from Eustis, Florida, sports business major.
My name is Luca Paulk. I'm from Split, Croatia, in Europe, and my major is sports business.
I'm Matthew Brown from Whitby, England, and my major is international business.
My name is Jens de Muil. I'm from Belgium, Europe, and my major is business administration.
Spencer Kennard. My business is art and philosophy. Our majors. Friendly, West Virginia.
Friendly. Glad to have you all. Hope we don't bore you too much. Border Force, Department of Border Force, Michael?
Yes, Council, you have in front of you first quarter report and comparison of the 2013-14 fiscal year in comparison to last fiscal year, 2012-2013. Hard to believe, but we do have one quarter of the fiscal year under our belt. I do want to bring some highlights to your attention. So far for the end of this first quarter, in revenues, we've brought in $1,333,846.59. That's actually a positive difference in comparison to where we were in the first quarter of the last fiscal year by about $31,648.49. The next sub fiscal pages are just kind of a summarization of each department, classifications of their expenditures. The second to last page marks our total expenditures. Our total expenditures ending this first quarter were $971,579.4, which is actually up by $161,781.21 from the previous fiscal year. I'll get to that here in a moment. Overall, revenues to expenditures, we still have a positive net difference of revenues over expenditures for the first quarter. That amount is $62,267.55, but comparing revenues over expenditures from the previous fiscal year, we're actually short where we were revenues to expenditures over last year's quarter by $130,132.72. A little bit of a concern, and what you'll see on the very last page of your report, is a breakdown of where that increase in expenditures from the previous fiscal year's quarter in this fiscal year's quarter. And you'll look and you'll see two highlighted items that will explain the majority of this expenditure increase. One is the transportation enhancement grant, and that is for the East Main Street project that we're completing and doing right now. I'm sure Jay will have more to add on the specifics of that project, but that's a significant cost. Again, that's an 80/20 grant match, but we have to expend before we receive those funds back. And then another item is street paving, where we paved Pocahontas and Fayette Street in this fiscal year. Both of those had a pretty significant impact in increasing our expenditures from what we had the first quarter of the last fiscal year and what we have now. It's just project season and what we're doing, so you won't have costs associated with that. But I wanted to attach that to it to give you an explanation and be upfront and clear as to where the majority of that expenditure difference is coming from. Under new business, I do want to bring some attention to the existing Army National Guard facility, and there's been some discussion about what's going to happen when they move into the new complex. I'll be in attendance along with Deborah Brockelman, representatives from the Upsher County Development Authority, in a meeting Monday, October 7. That meeting will be designed to discuss moving forward with the potential of possibly one of the options of possibly converting that existing armory and grounds into some type of recreational facility and utilizing that existing facility. Under old business, and I know Dave has this under him, and I think I want to steal his insight on this, to update you on the address mapping with the memorandum of understanding between the Upsher County Commission and the City of Buckanan Fire Department. Our city attorney, Dave McCully, has reviewed the Upsher County Commission's memorandum of understanding as it relates to the address mapping and sharing of that information with the City of Buckanan and the Fire Department. According to Dave, the document has been approved. There were some small changes, and we've actually resubmitted that revision with those changes to the Upsher County Commission and their county administrator, Megan Pomeroy. One thing that is of noted change within that document is the county, through their insurance agency, asked for certain coverages, certain dollar amounts, for our Fire Department and our insurance to adhere to and have this coverage. They're doing this with the volunteer fire departments and other volunteer fire departments in the county. We comply with everything and actually have some more coverage than what they're requesting, with the exception of computer fraud and cyber crimes, and we actually don't have the amount of coverage that they're asking for in the MOU. So I made that change of what we do provide in our coverage and submitted that to Megan Pomeroy, and she's supposed to get back to us with their insurance company to see if that coverage will suffice. If that is the case, pending Mr. McCully's review, that is approval, I'm hoping possibly to have that in front of council for consideration at the next council meeting later on this month, and hopefully we can get that issue resolved for Mitch at his firement. Still continuing under old business, city park playground equipment. I know there's been some articles in the paper, both the Delta and the Mountain. We have purchased that equipment, of course, and it has been delivered. We're in the process of looking at advertising for construction, taking bids on that. I'm not really quite sure when we'll go out for bid, but we still are on course to have that equipment installed by next spring. Home rule application update. Still starting to author the home rule application, the preliminary draft for the city. We still have a goal of getting that presented to council the next council meeting, a draft of that. Been out of town a little bit, so I'm going to get back in the fray of that as well. I do want to do a change on the city government auction, surplus auction. We're still partnering with the Upsher County Commission and the Airport Authority. I think that's a great relationship. We all have surplus items for auction, but we've actually moved the auction date back. That'll now be Saturday, November the 2nd at 10:00 a.m. That will still be at the waste garage on Mudlick Road, again, Saturday, November the 2nd at 10:00. Other reason we actually ended up moving that back is to understand that the Department of Highways is having their auction the week before that, which is what we originally planned, so we don't want to be in competition with that, so we moved it back a week. And finally, under old business, another update again on the cable franchise agreement assessment. As I mentioned at the last council meeting, we visited a booth, some of us, at the West Virginia Municipal League back in August, and there was a group called the Cohen Law Group who specializes in looking at cable franchise agreements for municipalities. They're out of Pennsylvania, and they offer a free assessment to review our existing cable franchise agreement and provide some opinions on ways that we can do various improvements for revenue and other enhancements to consider for our upcoming franchise agreement, which is scheduled to expire December 31st of next year, 2014. We're having a conference call, and Dave McCully will be in on that conference call. That's scheduled for Friday, October the 11th, so hopefully some of these items, I'll be able to give you a more concise progress report as we move forward with that in our next council meeting in mid-October. That's my report.
Questions for Michael? I got a couple of questions. On the East Gate project, Michael, what was the total grant that is applicable for that project?
The total, the total project cost were around $300,000.
It was originally submitted for $228, $220, and then I asked for those supplemental agreement due to increases in the material costs, and they approved that. So the total project cost is $278, of which the DOH will pick up 80% and will pick up 20.
And on the meeting, the October the 7th, in regard to the looking at the old armory and doing a recreational project there, is that meeting to assess whether there are grant opportunities or what the conversion cost would be along with what the operational cost would be long-term?
I think actually, at this time, it's really just bringing a group of interested individuals, that kind of stakeholders, if you will, in a project like that. Again, Deborah Brockelman is obviously being invited for that for obvious reasons. Steve Foster, I think is the one kind of spearheading this. Really to get together to talk, again, about the possibility of utilizing that as a recreational center in anticipation of the governor. Steve is trying to set up a meeting with the governor for the governor to come up here so we can make a pitch to the governor to see if there's any funding with the state of West Virginia that may be provided to start the process of converting this as the National Guard moves into the armory being built on Brushy Fork, trying to, again, secure some funds. Bryson Van Ostrm will be at this meeting as well. I understand Bryson has some ideas, some conceptual ideas, that I think we want to discuss kind of in a preliminary meeting in anticipation of the governor coming in, so we have all of our ducks in a row, so to speak, and we can move forward with that. We really want to see what the governor has to say, see if there's some interest in possible funds from the state, and that'll help give us a clear picture of some of the things that we want to do once we have that meeting. This is kind of a planning meeting, I guess, if you will.
Well, there's two comments I'd make. If there's ever a great time to go out and do something as far as long-term debt, it's now, and you'll probably have that window of opportunity for at least another 12 to 18 months because of the cost of capital is so low. But the other issue that I'm concerned about, anytime you do a major project like that, if it's done, is what the operational costs are going to be on an annual basis. I think that's something that we need to get some serious thought to.
That's all I have.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you, Michael. Camera left.
Yeah, I am.
We got a sneaker right there.
I saw him.
It's your turn to stand up, face the camera. Tell us your name, where you're from, what you major in.
I'm Seth Jag. I'm from Buckanan, West Virginia. My major is business management.
Hey. Mitch?
Good evening. We recently had some extensive repairs done to our ladder truck. It just needed some maintenance that we have been prolonging. We thought we were going to receive a grant, but after the federal fund got sequestered, our grant got denied. We spent about $2,000 in repairs, told we had to repair the tank that was leaking, and also had to replace some seals and packing in the pump. Truck's an 86 model, so the packing and stuff in the pump, that's just considered routine maintenance. We made a couple thousand dollars in it. We just had the ladder recertified only. Our ladder truck did pass its annual certification with no complications, so we're good to go for another year on that. The volunteers have purchased a new pickup that's been delivered. We may have told you we have an old '96 pickup that was getting pretty rusty, so we sold it, and we're going to sell our expedition to have, so the cost for the new pickup is going to be a wash on that. And we do have new squad truck ordered. It should be here probably by the end of, maybe November, we're thinking. Just a reminder, Dave, I haven't forgotten about your ticket. Our fall by, she has opted over to 12. Tickets are $30. We have a lot of prizes. We still need to sell a few more tickets, so if anybody's interested, they can stop by the fire station or contact any of the firemen. We'll gladly get a ticket to you.
There's food with that, too, right?
Yes, yes, that includes meal. Yeah, yeah. Also, I would like to respectfully ask council to set an interview date to interview our eligible firefighter candidates. We have a long-term firefighter who has announced his retirement in October, actually, the end of this month. I believe it's October. We've established a list of candidates. Civil Service Commission has approved that list of candidates, and I believe it has been presented to council. I think our next step is council needs to interview three of those candidates. So I need you folks to, we need to pick a date for candidate interviews for council.
We have absences, but they're going to have to put up with whatever we decide, aren't they?
That's why you always show up. You might get it for something.
Yeah. Next week's not good for me, but, and Monday, the 14th, is a holiday.
Yes.
So 15th, 16th, 17th, 17th of council meeting. Or do you want to do it on a Saturday morning or something like that? Take a half hour for each interview, you think?
Probably. That's what we did for the police.
That could be a lot of time. I doubt that it will take that long, Dave.
If we allocate.
I don't anticipate that long.
I'm flexible.
Tuesday, the 15th?
Tuesday, the 15th. Here, 6 o'clock?
That's the 16th, Rich?
No, 15th. 15th.
Tuesday, the October 15th, 6:00, 6:30, and 7:00.
Good? Okay. We'll do that.
That's all I have, unless you have any further questions.
Okay, thanks, Mitch.
See me after the meeting, Mitch, I'll get another ticket. Okay. I'll get with you tomorrow, Dave. Okay. That's fine.
Jay Hall, City Engineer.
Good evening.
Happy.
Just seven projects to briefly discuss, but unlike Mitch losing his grant, our Gateway East is what I discussed first. Our monies are secured for that, actually, according to the DOH today, and our project funding is not affected by the recent going on with the federal and state governments, so we're in okay shape. As you all probably noticed, we've transitioned from the business section of the project down to the residential project, and starting next week, we'll be shutting off East Main Street from Lightbird Street to College Avenue, a half a block at a time, because there are alternate routes to bypass the project to get to and from the college or back to City Hall or downtown Buckanan. And rather than using the flagman and, you know, letting traffic through and letting traffic stop in them and wait for concrete trucks, we're just going to stop the traffic completely on that East Main Street in half-block sections. The only business that will be affected will be Tierney's Insurance, but we've made arrangements with her, and, you know, if somebody has business at the insurance agency, we will let them through. But other than that, the project's going good. We're just over 23% complete with today's activities, and we still intend to be completing the south side this fall and hopefully a little bit of the north side before we move over to the public safety complex. The North Ridge development, it's just to say that the City of Buckanan has completed their commitments to the project as far as installation of the water lines, making the water taps, and putting in the sanitary sewer system. So that project is wrapped up. And Dave, you can add to this project. I'll pause here, but the Sudden Lake Fiber Optic Upgrade Project, I wanted to briefly touch on those. Last time I reported that due to the location of some grave sites, that allowing of the right-of-way where they wanted to put the fiber optic line, we couldn't do that. But after speaking with Harley Ground and representatives from the DOH, the graves are actually located on the other side of the cemetery in question, so Sudden Lake's proposed route will not have any interference with that. They've submitted a right-of-way agreement and some mapping, and this is where I'll, you know, defer to you for just a moment. I don't know where we are in the status of that.
But we're trying to set up a meeting with the Sudden Lake officials, primarily Mike Kellerman and Peter Brown, to discuss going forth with our TV cable franchise agreement. In reviewing the proposed right-of-way, there is no consideration proposed being paid to the city whatsoever. One of the things that I've preached about steadfastly to council over the 31 years I've done this job now is we treat everybody the same. We don't act arbitrarily. We don't act precisely. That's the way all governments function. And we have granted previous rights-of-ways to the state of West Virginia, to Monongahela Power, to earlier CMP telephone Verizon, and they've always paid us for their rights-of-way. There's no consideration recited in this right-of-way. It is true that we operate, the lease agreement on the top of the hill is tied into our franchise agreement, but this is an altogether new right-of-way situation. So I would kind of see this as something that we could put on the agenda for that meeting that we hope to have first part of November with Sudden Lake officials, and if nothing else, it's a bartering point for, you know, you give us something here, we might be inclined to give you something there, kind of an arrangement. And we don't want to take any position that we're not going to do this with Sudden Lake tonight or anything of that sort, but I just think it's something that the council and the TV cable board ought to be fully engaged with before we move forward.
Okay, so that's the Sudden Lake Fiber Optic Upgrade. The Water Treatment Plant Improvement Project, I reported to you all last time that we were in the process and getting ready to interview the three engineering firms. We have interviewed those firms, and after tallying the evaluations, the city has selected and notified Chapman Technical Group that they would be our engineer of record for this wastewater treatment plant improvement project. Currently in negotiations with them. As a matter of fact, I'm going to be in touch with Greg Belcher, the vice president of the company, tomorrow to discuss some items in that contract. McDonald's Route 20 Lane Widening Project, we had our PFR meeting, Sam and I did, with the DOH and other utilities on September 23rd, and the project went well. They're moving forward. They needed some sanitary sewer information and some waterline material type information. We provided that to them. I asked the DOH if they would consider relocation of these two existing utilities prior to completion of the project, because where they are now, if we ever needed to work on those sanitary sewer and water lines, they could cause some traffic delays due to their location to the sidewalk or the proposed sidewalk and travel lanes. Since it's going to be three lanes through there, I've asked them to consider if they would put the waterline in one travel lane and the sanitary sewer in another travel lane, so if something did happen, there would still be two means of, you know, an orphan and a outbound lane that would remain open while the work was completed on the respective utilities. They were very acceptable to that. They liked the idea, and it's been passed up to the utility coordinator in the District 7 office. They're going to schedule a meeting with Sam and I to get together and finalize the locations of those two relocated water lines. Projects moving forward, the only meeting that they're back, a month, they've moved the final field review meeting to late November rather than late October, but other than that, they still have the plan to advertise the project for construction in April and go to construction in late May of 2014. Island Avenue, I finally got a chance to get back on that project and start the designing of the Island Avenue waterline upgrades so that we can upgrade that four-inch waterline, which is 75% under Island Avenue, US West Virginia Route 151, and we'd like to move that to the north side of the street, the road, and, you know, upgrade it to a six-inch waterline so we can provide more adequate fire flow over in that area of Buckanan. And finally, the public safety complex. When we finish with Gateway East in mid-November, we're going to immediately move over for the next three to four foreseeable months to finish that project up, and I've sent out the, getting ready to send out a bid package for door frames, a separate contract for door and door hardware, and also a separate contract for suspended ceiling grid and ceiling tiles, because we have to do some priming and painting in there when we first get back into the project, but as soon as we're done, it's going to start putting on the amenities and start buttoning it up, you know, call the three contractors that came in last year to put in the air supply, HVAC, return to supplies, finish the fire alarms and all that. So it's coming together. We're just starting to get everything. We want everything on site so that when the street department gets there, they'll not be waiting for anything. And no questions, that's all I have.
Questions for Jay? Got a lot going.
Thank you.
Stay busy. Rich Clemmons, Assemblymember.
We've had a couple of issues recently in town with dumpsters and some concern about where the dumpsters are placed and so on. I think we've got those resolved. At least we have a good meeting today, so hopefully those issues are taken care of. Continue to get a number of calls for individuals that are either not taking care of their property or using adjacent city property, really, private, or paper alleys or other areas that, in fact, the city owns as if it was theirs. That's not appropriate. That is city property, and the city typically does not relinquish that unless we can exchange it for another piece of property of like value. But other than that, things are pretty normal. We're about ready to implement the new ordinance regarding electrical permits. Still encourage folks to come in, get a muller. That's all I have.
Questions for Rich? I have a question. Rich, what is the property owner's responsibility in respect to keeping, let's say, for example, Jolbone over in the Kepner area, the flow, do they have responsibility to clean up the creek at all or half of the creek?
Typically, you know, that's a, that's a pretty delicate area there, and I don't think I want to try to answer that one. Sam or Jerry would probably be better, but typically, that's a public water flow, so you've got to be very careful about what you do. Certainly, if there's trash in the creek or something like that, you want to remove that if there's a chunk of wood or tire or something like that, but you don't want to do anything that changes the course of that stream without some professional review of what's happening. So be very careful if you have a little on that area. If you have questions or you foresee problems, let us know. Let us send some folks out there with the right engineering and legal information to make sure we do the right thing at the right time.
Okay, thanks.
Dave McCully, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Chevron updates. One of the, perhaps the most important thing you have tonight from me is a draft ordinance from the City of Clarksburg. About two weeks ago, Rich Clemmons put me on notice about a news piece that he had, I think, either read in the paper or seen on Channel 12 or something of that sort, and I made inquiry earlier this week with Martin Howe, who many of you know as the Clarksburg City Manager. He and I've had an excellent rapport over the years when he was an assistant city manager, and I asked him, I just called and said to him, gee, where are you with your ordinance? And he explained that they started out pretty hot and heavy with the suggestion of having this drug house ordinance that I'll explain to you in just a minute. And then there were some legal concerns that their city attorney had with going forward with it. There's been a lot of public pressure, apparently. They think it's a good idea, so now they're trying to weigh the delicate legalities against what could be a very effective way of dealing with drug problems in Clarksburg. So he has sent the draft. They have not even done this on a first reading yet. It's a work in progress, but I didn't see why we should wait to see what Clarksburg is going to do for two or three or six months. Let's go ahead and get a draft of what they're thinking about and let you all be looking at it. This might allow us to toughen up and tighten up some of the things that we do relative to drug practices in Buckanan. I would note that he expressed his awareness of what we had done with bath salts. I forwarded him our bath salts ordinance highlighting the section dealing with landlords. This is primarily a landlord ordinance, that the way this would work is essentially if there is a police investigation that pans out positive for drug use, they find, for example, you've read in the paper, the last two or three- the last two or three additions about, you know, evidence of clandestine mobile meth labs, things of that sort. If you find those kind of things around a particular property, that's enough to establish probable cause that there's drug activity going on within those premises. This notice of investigation would be sent from the police department to the owner of the property. And they would then have a fixed period of time to commence eviction proceedings against that particular tenant. I think there's, oftentimes it's a situation, and this is certainly not an indictment of all landlords, but some folks, all they care about is collecting the rent on a particular piece of property. They don't care what goes on in there or anything else. And that's not very conducive to addressing this drug problem. So Clarksburg's being very proactive about it. I'm sharing this ordinance with you all and the thoughts that we might be proactive. Michael asked me to not say too much about this tonight because we've only got four of the seven council members, but I'll tease you a bit with a notion of perhaps looking at trying to have some sort of regional summit involving Clarksburg, Bridgeport, Buchanan, Elkins, Weston, Brennan Police Chiefs, city attorneys, county prosecutors, council people into it, have sort of a group think and start coordinating our activity more from a regional perspective than what we've been doing of late. So something to think about. Several other updates and then I'll be quiet. As Rich noted, the city electrical inspection ordinance goes into effect on October nineteenth. Michael's already talked about the data points with the fire department. Helped this last week Jerry Arnold with the personnel matter that resolved itself in a, in a good way. There are some rights-of-way matters that I'm working on for the water department, including the prospects. I don't wanna steal Jay's thunder for a future report, a possibility of a swap or actually an acquisition of some customers from the Elkins Road Public Service District on a project that's going on out there. TV cable, we're looking to an early November meeting, but I don't have a specific date or dates to run past you, but the sooner the better. I can tell you wearing my college hat for just a moment, everybody on the college campus received a message from our police chief today talking about this forthcoming enforcement of having to park with your right wheels to the curb. So that's, that's, that's been received by the college players. Michael just earlier today mentioned some problems with the collection of a delinquent BNO, contractor's BNO, that I'll be just helping him with, trying to facilitate a good resolution. And the Armory project, my update is the intergovernmental agreement that Mayor Davidson executed, oh, probably ten days ago, was sent to Charleston. It's my understanding that it has been delivered to the Attorney General and we're just waiting for that final approval. And we could have that back just about any day now. That's, that's pretty much all I have unless you have questions for me to say.
Questions for Dave?
I don't have a question, but I got a comment. Dave, I think the situation with the Clarksburg ordinance in respect to the drug issues is a great idea. And I really think we need a comprehensive plan for dealing with those issues in our city and county. And we need to involve the commission and the sheriff's department along with the school board. And it's much more than just law enforcement, it's a societal issue that we ought to be dealing with. Neighborhoods need to have maybe a neighborhood watch or what have you. But I think it's something that's really long overdue, a comprehensive plan to help we eradicate, eradicate some of these issues. We're the only.
I agree entirely. That it? Okay, thank you Dave. Correspondence, Boy Scouts, Uptown County, a door-to-door food drive request, do you wanna speak to that?
Sure. Historically, we have Troop 128 and PAC 120 have done their own food drive where we would drop off flyers one week and the next week we would go pick up food that was left on the front porches. And I've, for years I've been thinking that, what could we do to get more scouts involved and make it a community-wide scouting for food effort as opposed to just a troop in PAC 128? And so I, this year I've, I've started the conversation and it's been received quite well. In fact, all scouting units, both PAC and Troop 128 and 100 and 124, plus also PAC 106, will be participating. And tentatively, we'll be meeting next Thursday to discuss who, which group we'll be covering, which area. And we're not gonna be just working within the city limbs, we'll probably, we'll be working within rural subdivisions on Vietre Town. And there was mention about several other areas that are a little bit more rural than what I was anticipating. But those little details that we're gonna try and work out with our Thursday, next Thursday's meeting. But in talking within my own group, PAC 128, it was suggested that instead of going out two days and wanting to drop off flyers, wanting to pick up food, why don't we look at the possibility of going one day and we just go door-to-door, knocking on doors and as scouts in their scout uniform and look and ask for donations for food? So that's what we're proceeding with. And it's a change from what our original plan was, what we've used for years. So for this year, then we, we especially need to make sure we get the Is dotted and Ts crossed and confer with you folks to make sure that you guys have no problems at all with the concept that we're talking about. And then the other concept is, it was mentioned, I think Party for Space and Party is a neutral area. What about using a Jawbone Park as a place to, for the scouting units, you know, Cub Scout packs and Boy Scout troops to drop off the food and sort it before we take it to the parish house? And which I think is a good idea and that's something else that we'll need to add to the request. And I sent a letter to you, Mayor Davidson, and I don't know if, does everybody else have a copy of the same letter?
It's right here.
Okay, good. I haven't read it verbatim, I just more or less paraphrased it.
So the date's still scheduled for November second?
Correct, yes.
That'll be both the notice and pickup, as you say.
Correct, yes.
I can help publicize that too on the city's webpage too.
What, please?
We'll publicize that on the city's webpage as well.
Okay, and then we'll publicize that through the Record Delta and Intermountain and their datebook pages. And then also we will, we're looking at some, possibly some other avenues for advertising. And in talking with the county administrator, I've been invited to go to the, one of the county commission meetings prior to us going out on a food drive. And I'm tentatively planning on the next to last Thursday, I believe the twenty-fourth of October, going in and making a short presentation to the county commission. And that'd be another way, another avenue of publicizing what we plan to do.
I'd entertain a motion to approve the Cub Scout food drive on November second. Some of it, and include the use of Jawbone Park in the afternoon. I wish you made a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it.
I would make a comment, when you mentioned the parish house, Salvation Army collaborates with the parish house on a lot of these kind of scenarios. And, you know, they provide social services for people that are less fortunate than we are. So I'm sure that when you get all the food, there'll be plenty to hopefully get to, not only the parish house, but Salvation Army.
Okay, and in years past, we would have one food drive in which we would donate food to the parish house. The second one would be to the Salvation Army. And next year we will go, look, going back to that format. And I'll need to be talking with our Salvation Army ahead of time to make sure that we get everything set up and so that we can move forward smoothly with that. But considering that we're, we're not planning it up, rather than try and throw an extra twist into it, we decided to go ahead and just stay with donating the food to the parish house this, this, this year. And the next spring, we'll take a good hard look at donating to the Salvation Army and then just get back to the rotation of splitting between the two.
That's good, that's good to know. I just think it's important that the public realizes that both those entities, organizations collaborate with a lot of services to people that really need help.
Okay, thank you. Thank you Nate.
You're welcome, Ken, and thank you.
Thanks Nate.
Correspondence, you have in your packet a letter from Uptown County CDB. And I won't read it all, but it says, CDB will make two fifty thousand dollar payments to the building commission of the city of Buchanan. The first payment scheduled to be paid immediately. Second, the final payment will be made at the end of the current fiscal year. So they're, they're committed in writing, we didn't ever doubt that. Next thing we have is the BU High School Homecoming Parade. They're asking to use the, they want a parade route from the Gibson Library up Main Street ending at the courthouse. And they're requesting use the courthouse steps, we directed them to the county commission for that. But the date is October tenth, beginning at five thirty, we entertain a motion to approve that parade route. Some of the motions made there, a second?
A second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor, say a five, say a aye. No, ayes have it back. The, Jay reported to you that we selected Chapman Technical Group for the water plant upgrades. And you're, further in your consent agenda, we have approval amendments to the regular meeting of September nineteenth. Building and wiring permits, pay for the bills. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. And a second?
A second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No comments and announcements. Moving right along here, see. Rich?
Halloween Trick or Treat is officially scheduled for six to seven PM, October thirty-first. That's all I wanted to know.
That's, that's the fifth Thursday also, where we have a joint meeting with the county.
I have had no correspondence with the county regarding that, so if there's some interest, we need to do that pretty shortly.
We're gonna do Trick or Treat on the thirty-first. Did we approve that as a council?
Yes, it's been approved.
Yeah, we did, last meeting, yeah.
Just a reminder. All right. Anything else?
That's all.
John?
No comment.
Dave, anything further?
Just real quick, I would ask people again to be very careful when they get phone calls for telemarketing or innovations for not-for-profit or charities that oftentimes, in many cases, the telemarketing firm takes a huge percentage of what the individual is donating. And I just think everybody needs to be aware of that. I think they really prey on unsuspecting people and older people, unfortunately. You gotta be very careful. I'll just say a quick, quick story, I got a call from one of the local banks I have an account with. And they said your debit card has been deactivated, press one to have it reactivated. I don't have a debit card, but I pressed one anyway. And the guy got on the phone and said, this is the security department, we need your sixteen-digit code number to activate your debit card. So there are, I called the bank up immediately, but they had like a hundred calls that day. But there's so many scam artists out there using the phone and cell phones, please be careful. I'll say more about it probably later on on a couple of other specific instances, but just beware. And there are wonderful charities out there that really need help. But most of them don't call over the telephone and ask for donations.
My daddy told me years ago, if something sounds like it's too good to be true, it probably is too good to be true. Anybody else have anything that they'd like to, any questions or any comments anybody wants to make? Well, if not, we're adjourned, thank you all for coming.